I would call the Lord and take city council meetings in Dunellen.
Recording in progress.
And everybody please stand for a clear.
For the religious to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody from the leaders can pray. Give an awful prayer.
I'll be happy to.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Heavenly Father, thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for the blessing of living in such a beautiful town. And thank you, Lord, for each one who takes an interest in Dunellen and for these who've been called by you to serve. Help our meeting to go well and to please you in our attitudes and in the decisions that are made. I thank you in Jesus' name.
Do anything.
Hey, maybe could you call Rose?
Mayor Dunn?
Here.
Vice Mayor Inskey?
Here.
Councilperson McDonald?
Here.
Councilwoman Davis?
Here.
Councilwoman Kovach? Dan Smith, Hines officers?
Here.
Chad Ward, Public Service Manager?
Here.
Kelly Wine, Community Development?
Here.
Michelle Linder, Assistant Court?
Here.
Chief Scott Leon?
Here.
Lieutenant Bray?
Here.
Oh, oh, so moving Police Department?
Come here.
City Attorney Andrew Hens?
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Baltimore on Wednesday, June 7th, 2023. I would amend it June 8th to add backup to Agenda Item Number 7. And once again, I would like to remind everyone that please speak clearly into your microphone because we're having trouble picking you up on the recordings and listeners on Zoom cannot hear you.
Okay, a couple of comments from me before we start. One, it's a fairly large crowd, and I want to remind everybody there's an exit behind you and one to your right in case some emergency happens and you need to get out of here. Also, we will start with council comments on this agenda. Does anyone on the council have any comments about the agenda? We're all good. Okay. I've just got one, and it has to do with a meeting we had last week on short-term rentals. We will be calling another meeting for that topic probably during this meeting. And so if you don't mind, if you want to talk about that tonight in your public comment, you're welcome to do so. But if you'd like to hold off on that until the next specific meeting for that, I would appreciate it. Okay. Now, public comments on non-agenda items. If you would like to talk about anything that is not on the agenda, you are free to do so at this time. I ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Speak clearly into the microphone, give your name and address, and try not to address anyone other than me on this council. If you wouldn't mind, just address any comments to me. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, I'm Kathy Dunn. Kathy Dunn, 11386 Hendrick Street. I wanted to address an issue that has been bothering me since I've been here in 2017. The fact that our gypsy dumpsters and our mechanical equipment are not placed according to our conference of plan. In our future land use element section, one of the policies states that screening of all mechanical equipment, utility devices, and similar service components, that is not being done by FEGA, especially in our historic Grenada subdivision and also in Dunellen Heights. Also, dumpsters will be located to avoid negative impacts with adjacent residential uses. And also, even if they're not facing residential, they're facing our major thoroughfare that goes to our Rainbow River, and our vision statement states that we are ecotourism community. And I'd much rather look at the trees in the sky and the sun and the river than a dumpster. And a little birdie told me that we are going to be negotiating a new contract with Waste Management, and we might have some leverage to get them to follow our policies. Also, if they cannot be located out of sight, can we screen them? The other thing is, some of our dumpsters that belong to, on city property, are not located well. The parking lot behind the police station, that is two dumpsters out there that really should be screened because people driving by on West Pennsylvania can see them. So even though it's a small thing, I think if we add up all these small things, we will have a much more attractive and eco-friendly town. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I don't have anyone outside of Dunellen. I'll be involved soon.
Oh, okay. All right. Again, the way the normal council meeting works now for any agenda item, if you want to speak specifically?
Excuse me. I didn't have one that signed up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Baby Coker.
Baby Coker, okay.
My wife can go instead of me.
I signed on the wrong paper. I'm Paula Coker. I am at 11983 Palmetto Way, Dunellen. And my background is that I've been in healthcare for 59 years. Who would believe that? Okay. And what the relevance of that is, that I am noticing what is a potential hazard for the health of people who are utilizing the river in front of our house. Now, this is kind of a strange setup, but it's right by the bridge. Last year, the city got the bridge jumpers off of it with the cooperation of the whole county, and that has really not been a problem. But at the same time, they also said that nobody can enter the water from the deck, Blue Run Deck. So that has not been enforced, and so they're climbing in. And one thing they're doing when they climb in there is they're swimming across the river, they're swimming down the river, and the people who aren't entering that side are entering, climbing down the cement way and entering the river there. And what prompted me to come today is we were working very hard outside on our dock, and the, I heard a young man say very loudly, "We gotta get at least 50 people here with 50 dogs." And he came over and he said, "How y'all doing?" Now, that's what prompted me to come here today. The anticipation of 50 dogs in the water right beside our house, because they do bark, they do go after people, and there's a constant yelling, "Settle down, dog," you know, that kind of stuff sometimes. But the big concern for me is that we have about three boats parked in front of our deck, and that, and they have on the other side a couple. And that makes the waterway for passing boats, you know, barely big enough for a boat. And what's happening then is the kids are swimming in the water with no identification, you know, easy to miss. And so it could be that they got whammer jammered by something. Now, also, I see that there were about six paddle boards and kayaks sitting in the water watching the guys jump off the tree. So it's a major attraction. It's probably Florida's greatest attraction, never mind Disney. It's right there. And so they are just taking full advantage of the situation. The other little point, okay, I'm done, is that they are landing from the tree on their bellies and other parts.
Thank you very much.
I did have one other person fell out of her quest to speak to him, but it's Bridget Hanley, and I don't think she's here, and I don't see her on Zoom either.
Did you sign up on the way in? Maybe it was too late.
You signed up, what's your name, sir?
Thomas Cross.
Thomas Cross, did you have a specific agenda item you wanted to speak to? Did you have a specific agenda item?
Actually, the young lady that just spoke, I'd like to address that if I could.
That's okay.
That's fine. Yeah. Okay. You can, please, please just state your name and address.
I don't live near.
That's okay. That's okay. Where's where you, you don't have to live here.
Thank you, sir. My name is Thomas Cross. I live at 19611 Southwest 88th Loop in Dunellen. I do paddle. I'm an old man. I do exit there. I kind of appreciate the swimmers because I am an old man. I cramp up and I fall onto the paddle of the crazy cat kayak. But what I'm here for mainly is I heard some of the conversations and read some of the conversations on Facebook. And town is a river, in my opinion, and I am new to town, but I used to come this way quite a bit for the last 12 years. I lived in Ocala, so I'm part of the problem that you guys have to deal with. But I do live here now, so I want to be part of the solution. And I did take the effort to go ride the town swimming hole that we have, that's what I'm going to call it, because I am country. It looks like we have a place that we can address some of the swimming problems at, but it needs money, and I worked your job years ago, and money's hard to come by in a small town. I'm going to make my minutes as short as I can for you. I would just suggest that we maybe go back to either county or state level and say that we have an impact, and the impact is county-wide. We are pulling people from other towns to this town. It's hitting all over this river, and we need money, and we need money from them to address our swimming hole. And if we get that money, we can maybe say, "We have a swimming hole. We have a swimming hole for our residents," and it could be for our residents if we set this up correctly. But we need to clean it up. We need to add to what we have. Yes, there's going to probably be people upset with that. That's why you guys get paid the big bucks and you get harpooned in the back on a regular basis. But I think you have the start of the solution there, and you maybe go back to the county, win with those polls that we're talking about, like KP Hole, that what, 90s? Maybe they have to look at what they've developed and maybe look to expand on what they have. I won't even take my full two minutes. I appreciate your time, folks.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Dave Coker, and I live at 11983 Palmetto Way. When we moved here back in 2010, I used to be able to jump off my dock, and I would maybe bog down in maybe six to seven inches of mud, right? My wife mentioned we were working this weekend out by the dock, and I am now probably three to three and a half foot in mud. And the reason that has happened is because of the, a couple of reasons. I'm an engineer, a road bridge engineer for all my career. And what has happened is the detention area that where both the city and the county dumped their wastewater into right next to our house flows out into the river, and the sand settles in and the mud winds up underneath our dock. So I'm going to ask that the city look at doing, and I've asked for the city to fence that area, because what's happening is the people come through there and they tromp down the vegetation that's supposed to catch the silk and stop going into the river, but nobody wants to address the issue. It's a joint issue that detention area is permitted by the city and the county, and it's with mud, and everybody wants to point the finger at somebody else and say, "We don't want to do anything." Well, it's time for somebody to do something. You guys did do something about the kids jumping off the bridge because that was a danger. We also have the current danger, because my wife mentioned, we've got kids swimming back and forth across that river, right and left, and boats coming down, and nobody's wearing, nobody's got dive flags on, nobody's got floaties on the back of them where you can see them. Sooner or later, somebody's going to get hit, they're going to get killed, and Dunellen is going to be at fault because you guys have been warned to do something about that, and you haven't done anything. I've been up here for three years now, asking for you guys to fence that area, and everybody keeps saying, "We can't do it because it belongs to somebody else." Well, it belonged, the detention area, the property belongs to the city of Dunellen. It was permitted, a joint permit with the city, the county, and Swift Mud. So you guys need to do something to fence that area off, and you can stop the jumpers, but if you ran a fence, got the county to allow you to attach to their fence, you could stop the access from that corner. You've got ordinance that stops the access from the ramp. Now, swampies can deal with swampies issues, and the other side right now does not appear to be an issue. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name, my name is Paula, and I am a resident of the city of Dunellen. Good evening, council. I know this is not open for discussion, but I hope it will be addressed when the agenda allows. Now that this new Blue Run Ramp ordinance was passed, many of us feel there are unanswered questions, and we would like to be more informed on your decision. We want to know how locals and visitors that don't attend meetings will know about this ordinance. If a new sign is to be erected, we hope you included no items to be left unattended on the ramp, which would help the problem they are trying to leave. We hope that you also mention the Florida statute fine for littering. We hope you are concerned with possibly causing more dangerous scenarios of people entering the ramp area over barricades and steep slopes. So we still ask that the $50 fine can be limited to certain days and hours. We wonder how this new ordinance will keep KP Hole customers from swimming in front of the ramp and standing on the ramp while waiting for the shuttle if KP Hole attendants are not there to advise. This is quite common at the height of exit times. The city is afraid of being sued because someone may get hurt or killed, as was mentioned on May 10th. We wonder how this ordinance is going to help if it does not prevent swimming in the ramp area, but just the use of the ramp to swim. So as you said, these days, people sue over anything. We wonder if the council understands that during the summer months, the KP Hole and State Park are at full capacity almost by 9:00 a.m. as well as Dinkins Memorial Park. The council really hasn't taken away the privilege of swimming as it was already in the agreement, but the council has definitely taken away the small-town charm, using this ramp for a quick dip or a quick visit for those that truly want to abide by the law. We hope the council is willing to work on giving something back, working on another free area for locals to enjoy swimming, since watercraft people can enjoy free floating and free paddling. We are truly blessed to have Chaplain at Dinkins Memorial Park, but I'm disappointed that on the city website, there's this tiny description and no further information on fees, the hours, notices of why it may be closed. However, in the description, it does read, "The city will continue its efforts to improve the park and amenities for the enjoyment of our visitors." I'm standing here today asking the council to consider, no matter where you live, no matter what the alligator situation is, how can we improve park hours whether swimming is allowed or not? How can we add parking spaces outside of the park? How can we advertise better public information about this park? What are the financial numbers? I just saw the budget. Adding a launching area at this park to alleviate the overcrowding at the Boat Ramp and Blue Run Ramp. Please don't tell us how bad you feel about this and that you're sorry. Instead, show us how bad you feel by replacing your decision with a better place for us locals to go swimming. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? I'll try to address some of this real quick without getting too far off the agenda. First of all, there is going to be a cleanup at City Beach tomorrow. Any volunteers that would like to show up? Please come. It's already been scheduled. What time does it start? Nine o'clock in the morning? It will be at City Beach.
But where was this information? Where was it?
I'm giving it to you right now. This is the first time I heard y'all wanted to volunteer. Y'all, come, you can call anybody.
I will volunteer when I come back to town, but I'll leave it in the morning.
Find a order if other comment can only occur when someone is at the podium after they've stated their address for three minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so please let me finish, okay? There is, seriously, there's a cleanup tomorrow. I'll find out how you can get this information, but it had already been scheduled. Beautification Committee of this town, if you would like to be involved, will give you all that information. Also, to let you know, the city has been working on and with FWC to stop the boats parked at Blue Run Park and at the bridge. We're trying to get something worked out where they can no longer park there because I think it's extremely dangerous, just like I thought it was extremely dangerous to let people swim right there.
I'm just cheering you.
This will probably be in the July meeting. If you'd like to come back, we'll put it on the agenda. The final thing has to do with that fence they're talking about. Yes, that is owned by the city of Dunellen. I would hope at the next meeting, we will be discussing how to fence that off. Okay, now, let me get back to the agenda.
Well, can I just?
Yes.
I have two things. So if you fill out an application, which I think is in the lobby, and you sign up for beautification, you get regular emails of what the beautification committee is doing and where the cleanups are. So when we ask, "Where is the notification of the park cleanup?", I would say that that has come out through emails from the city for anyone who's signed up for beautification. Just because you sign up doesn't mean you have to come to every event. You can come two hours a year, but pick up an application and help us help the city. We're five people. We do have Kathy Dunn in the audience who started the beautification committee, I don't know, a year or two ago. They've done tremendous things, and we need everybody's help to make a difference. Oh, the other thing I just wanted to address was, I know we're doing some follow-up on the slats on the tree that we're talking about. I do think there may have been an ambulance there some days ago from someone getting hurt jumping off the tree. So if we can continue the follow-up on how we might address the slats on the tree, it might just be helpful. That's it. Thank you.
I just want to address her point, the lady who just brought up the point about the notification. Right over there where they have the parking lot, right in Pennsylvania 41, where they got the historic district, could we put a sign up there similar to what the chambers got that's got upcoming city events or meetings or anything? Could we, so that if we had a cleanup, we could put a sign up there? City Beach Cleanup?
It's all online.
Oh, okay.
All online. Okay.
I believe also it was in the Riverland News.
Oh.
Okay. Again, we'll try to keep y'all informed on this. All right, let's get back to the agenda, if you don't mind. I don't want this meeting to drag on tonight. First, there is the consent agenda, which all of us have, I hope, read through. Do we have any comments from the audience on the consent agenda? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
I'm moved.
On second?
Second.
Can you discuss it up here?
Yep. I apologize, and I tried to reach out to Chris. It was too late, though. The $7,000 for the training, I'm not understanding what that's about. Can, we ask Chris to come up and explain that one more time?
Sure.
So I'm not sure what I'm holding on.
Okay.
I'm setting wrong.
I will say, I think it was wrong.
Yeah, what that's for is, we, within the Police Department, we have a software that manages both our crime reports and our evidence that we have to maintain. And then there are different standards. Because of that, because of the loss of administrative personnel, obviously, we're having to bring that group back in and retrain administrators so that it can be administered, because we have to go in and audit and do everything else. So that's what that money is for.
Okay, and so is this for our software? Is it for a person to come in and?
It's for a trainer to come in for three days, yep.
Okay.
This is not purchasing new software or anything else like that. That's existing in-house.
Three days for $7,000 sure sounds awful steep.
Absolutely. I totally agree with y'all, but again, we're happy to pay their travel from out of state in order to come here for three days. And then all the materials to go ahead and provide the education and work age, you know, curriculum, etc.
Okay, and who else going to receive the training right now?
Every single person that's currently on the administrative staff within the Police Department. So that way, because our goal is to build redundancy, so we don't run into this.
Okay, so that would be yourself, the chief?
Chris.
And Tom?
Tom and also James Rogers.
Okay, gotcha.
Then we'll have one new hire that will probably be in there as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
No problem.
Give us the questions about the consent agenda. Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Can I get a vote on this? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that's the consent agenda. Now, the regular agenda. Is Paula going to speak?
She asked that this be removed from the.
That's what I thought. I just didn't want to skip it. Okay. Is Scott here? Okay, Scott, please come to the podium. This gentleman is from Marion County. He talked to me along with Kathy Bryant the other day about a program where we're going to get a whack a bunch of money. We're going to explain it how it works.
Sure. Good evening, Commissioners. Scott Quintal from Marion County Community Services. There's a packet that I did bring, and I hope that was passed out to you. Very brief background, my intention is to give you some information when answering any questions you have. There is a decision that I had spoken with Mayor Dunn about for you all to make. There were settlements, or excuse me, there were lawsuits brought by the state of Florida against pharmaceutical manufacturers, distributors, pharmacies, as it related to opioids and the prescribing of opioids. Those lawsuits resulted in settlements, and those dollars are being distributed across the state of Florida into municipalities to address opioid-related issues, substance abuse, treatment, prevention, those types of programming. The front sheet that you have in that packet shows the breakdown of funding coming into Marion County. The first column is the regional fund, and I'll explain more about that momentarily. And then you see there are additional columns there for each of the municipalities, including the city of Dunellen, which is expecting to receive just over $47,000 over the next 18 years. The regional fund that I mentioned earlier will be covering all of Marion County, and that number has just recently been updated to $11.8 million that will be received over those next 18 years. There is an opioid settlement committee that has been set up by an inter-local agreement with the county, and the members that are on that committee are on page two. I will read that briefly, just so it's in your minutes. Chief Mike Balkin from the Ocala Police Department, Richby and Cooley representing the Marion County Hospital District, Ira Bethay Jr. representing Ocala City Council, Jesse Blair from the Ocala Fire Department, Commissioner Kathy Bryant representing Marion County Commission, Kristy Jurgens representing the Florida Department of Health in Marion County, Judge Robert Lamb representing the Fifth Judicial Circuit, Ben Marciano, who is an active recovery representative on the committee, Beth McCall representing the Marion County Children's Alliance, Chief Rodney Mascow from the Marion County Fire Rescue, and Sheriff Billy Woods from the Marion County Sheriff's Department. The remainder of the packet is just information such as the meeting dates, which are all sunshine and are open to the public for anyone to attend. And then the remaining pages describe the very broad and vague uses for these dollars. The issue to come before you all is if you are interested in receiving the $47,017 directly to the city of Dunellen. And then if you do that, that will be over the next 18 years, as you look at the chart, it would be anywhere between $2,000 and $2,800 annually. You'd receive a payment once a year. City of Dunellen would then be responsible for all reporting back to this, determining how those funds would be used, making sure that they meet the eligible uses within the document, and then reporting back to the state on an annual basis on how those funds are being used. The other option for the city of Dunellen would be to put those $47,000 in with the regional fund, which again is going to be about $11.8 million. Those funds would then be used to serve all the residents of Marion County, and all reporting and planning requirements would be covered by this opioid settlement committee, which would relieve the city of Dunellen from any of those reporting responsibilities. So that, in short, is the information. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm going to speak first. Kathy Bryant called me about this the other day and was kind of filling me in real quick, and then Scott called me back. And, you know, my first reaction was, this $47,000, I'm going to get it and spend it and do what I want to, but that's not how this works. We are going to get around $2,000, $2,500 a year. We have to develop our own program on how to spend it. Then we have to file.
Then we have to file basically, I'm mental mind, a tax return explaining how much money we got and where it went. And we have to account for this every year for the next 18 years. After listening to all this, I went from absolutely want the money and will spend it, uh, to no, you just take care of it. Uh, we'll spend more than $2,000 a year trying to keep up with this, is my opinion. And, and we have to develop our own program on how to spend it. I, I just don't think it's worthwhile, that's where I got.
Yes, I'd like to comment, and then implement the program.
Yeah, good point, good point, Jane.
Yeah, I would say as a licensed insurance insurer who does behavioral health for a living, that this would be something that we would want to team with the county on.
And the other thing I, I thought was very amusing when I read this, was the amount of money each city gets. Poor McIntosh is going to get $371 over the next 18 years. I'm just like, wow.
Yeah, the, uh, the distribution formula was set at the state level.
Right, right, I don't, just joking.
Yeah, absolutely.
But clearly, you know, if we were Marion County, if we were, uh, the City of Ocala is getting a million dollars, yeah, I think we could probably come up with all this and do the accounting and reporting, but personally, I just thought, $6,000, we'll spend more on that each year trying to keep up with it, is my reaction. What would your comment be to all these comments, based on what you know, Scott?
Yeah, I think, so, for a little bit of background, City of Bellevue has already given us an indication that they will be rolling their dollars into, uh, the regional fund as well. I think the other thing I would do, uh, councilman, is just ensure you that as this committee is administering these funds and running this process, it is very intentional on the part of that committee to make sure that they will be serving all Marion County residents, which of course includes folks here in Dunellen.
Would an example of this be like, for instance, you know, some kind of, just an example, a local doctor's office in Dunellen might have access to medication-assisted treatment or certified recovery specialists? Is that something that we might see kind of embedded here in our community, even if it's on a small scale? Because it's very difficult for people to get to Ocala and get to other places to get these services.
Sure, so, uh, we're in the process right now of putting together the priorities, which will determine what will be funded and how that will work. A number of things that are already being discussed is medication-assisted, uh, treatment, um, whether that's through the Ocala Fire Rescue or the Marion County Fire Rescue paramedicine programs, which can bring those medicines to folks anywhere in the county, um, or whether that would be through local locations or a partner like SMA Healthcare. A lot of that is still being worked out, um, but making sure that folks have access to those treatments is something that is being discussed. And, and transportation and geography, because Marion County is such a large county, um, is one of the things that is coming up in that conversation. I would also encourage, if anyone wants to find out more about it or understand, um, at the risk of, of the extra time, it can always come and update you again, is in a couple of months as we go through that process, but again, these meetings are open to the sunshine, and any of you would be welcome to attend them if you wanted to learn more about how the process is going.
Are they recorded?
Uh, they are not recorded, but there are minutes that are created, and we can certainly share those minutes with you.
That would be great, thank you.
Um, I don't know a procedure as to whether we can just make a motion and do it now to just make the final decision on what to do with these funds, or do we, should we put that off to next month or? Anybody have any thoughts?
Could we just go ahead and have a vote?
Well, that's what I really did.
I said, just have a vote, and then after, if we have to make an amendment after that, we can move it, just get it off the table.
Yeah, you can pick up something on the fly, uh, I think after the general business, or if you want to amend the agenda to address it now.
Okay.
That is, that is okay.
Okay, um, I guess if we're going to do it this way, I need to get public comments on this particular issue concerning the opioid settlement fund.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Does any of you have a comment about these funds? Yes, sir. I figured you would.
Chief Scaglione. Uh, before we make any motions and votes, I have no clue what you're looking at, so if this is something that's going to involve the police department, I would like to be able to review this stuff and have a look at it and have, have a vote before you take a vote. Probably going to take a longer meeting, sit back there and look at it, so.
No, that's, that's probably good, but why don't we put this on the agenda for next month? I think with all, when you're unanimous, unless chief comes up with some reason we don't, we'll be giving this money back to Marion County, let Marion County handle this. But, uh, let's put it on the agenda for June, or excuse me, July, and then we'll vote on getting this done. Okay. Oh, go ahead.
My name is Joel David Coe, I still live at 11983 Palmetto Way in, in Florida. I also own property out in Oregon when I was out there working on the bridge program. I was out there last month, and I attended a city council meeting where, uh, they had made a mistake of accepting some money and, uh, deciding to, uh, abide by what the state government of Oregon said was, that each city was to provide accommodations for homeless people. As a result of that, uh, the downtown parking lot had turned into a homeless camp of about 1,500 people, or a city that only has 2,500 people, because it's close to the river, et cetera, et cetera. And my comment out there was, when it comes to these state funds or any funds that come in, if you build it, they will come. So, if we want to get involved in this and we want to build it here, they will come. And I'm not sure I want those people in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Good comment, okay. Anyone else? Okay, well, we'll put this on the agenda next month and get this moved on. Okay, the next item, item number six, appointment of a police chief. Do we have any public comment? Anybody like to speak? Okay.
If this is part of the consent agenda, I'll.
No, no, no.
My name is Kat Kelly. I retired from MWC. I've worked this community for many, many years and, and care for this community very much. Um, I work currently at the Police Academy in town. I've known Chris for 30 years, and, um, I've watched him operate both on national levels, state level, and local levels in terms of criminal justice furthering, furthering the cause. And, um, question I would ask, that I always ask, does the position make the man, or does the man make the position? And with Chris, I, I, I watch plenty of people, I train all across this country, and I see plenty of people take positions to, for the power, and very few of them take it for the right reasons to serve. And I can tell you, after 30 years watching national, state, and local, Chris has a servant's heart. And, um, when it looked like Dunellen's police department's future was uncertain, I had a conversation with him, and he said, "I'm not going to go to another agency, this is where I want to be. And if Dunellen Police Department isn't going to be there, then, then I'm done. That's the only place that I want to have my, the rest of my police, uh, career." And I, I can tell you, knowing him and working with him, he's been the happiest here since he's worked at Dunellen. And, um, in closing, I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, you are lucky to have him, and he's lucky to have you. I think this is, this is, I can't tell you and give you any more endorsement than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anybody else that would like to speak in the audience?
How do I have to be sworn in?
No, no, you don't get old, back down, Mike.
Okay.
Oh, Mike.
I'm going to have to do this before you get sworn in.
My name is Mike Rose, I'm the Chief of Police of the Wilson Police Department. I've been in law enforcement for over 34 years. I've known Chris for a long time. Chris is a great man, just like Ms. Kat said, and, uh, ever since he's taken this position, I've been supporting him and working with him and trying to get him in the right track and look like he's done a very good job, because you all are swearing him in tonight. So, if he's getting sworn in tonight, which I'm pretty sure he is, from the Director of the Florida Police Chief Association, Antoine Shepard, and myself, the Assistant Director of the Florida Police Chief Association, we want to congratulate you, and we want to tell you, welcome to the team, and that we're here to help you with whatever you may need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. Okay, do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, that's public comment. Can I get a motion? A move to accept Chris Scaglione as an appointment to the City of Dunellen Police Chief.
I move that, um, Chris Scaglione be appointed as City of Dunellen's Police Chief.
Okay, a second?
A second.
Okay, do we have any discussion up here? Personally, I think we've all been around Chris now quite a few weeks and days and months. I know when this all started, I was fortunate enough to jump in with both feet and really get to know him. I can echo what both these folks have said, and I've only known the man two months. Uh, he's very professional. I don't have any problems with him taking this police department and making it as good as it can get. Um, I'm very, very impressed with just how he does things. He calls me all the time when he has an issue. Uh, I text him, he calls me, we're back and forth. Um, I, I think we're making a great choice. That's just my opinion, but I wasn't here to argue.
Our tenant, uh, he's been our tenant chief for a few months, and, um, he's done more than asked, and also is exceedingly user-friendly, and he also loves horses, and anybody who loves horses has.
Okay, Rex, you got a second?
I just want to say, I've only lived in Dunellen for about a year and a half, and I've been impressed with the police department, and I was with, I was in the audience when Chief McClain came in and made the statement. And the way that Chris stepped up right away and helped us get our feet back on the ground when the rug got pulled out, because we were all caught by surprise, and reading his emails about what he's done, as somebody who's worked, I worked for fire rescue for 32 years, I can, I can see that he is a man who is, as you said, service-oriented, and that's what makes a difference.
No, I'm, I'm good. You're good? Yes. Julian, you're good? Okay, got a motion and a second? Get a vote? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Unanimous? All right. First item for one that's been designated, where are you in?
Stop swearing at me, all right?
I'm here and all, I'm going to bring you in, all right? Ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, ready, right. I, Chris Scaglione, do solemnly swear.
I, Chris Scaglione, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and the Government of the United States.
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and Government of the United States.
And the state of Florida against all enemies domestic and foreign.
And the state of Florida against all enemies domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same.
That I am entitled to hold office under the Constitution.
And that I am entitled to hold office under the Constitution.
That I will faithfully perform all duties of the Chief of Police for Dunellen, Florida.
That I will faithfully perform all duties of Chief of Police for Dunellen, Florida.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So, help me God, and take obligations freely without any mental reservations.
So, help me God, I take this obligation freely without any mental reservations.
Congratulations. We're going, we're going to do a penny right here. Oh, yeah. Don't try to stab him now.
We do it with the uniform off. I mean, on a hanger.
She didn't hit him, he's still alive.
I got a staple. Ooh, I have to pay extra for that.
Well, thank you all very much, thank you for putting your trust in me. We got some rebuilding to do, and it's going to happen really fast, so.
Okay, let's go on to item number seven, agreement, AGR 2023-14, Florida Police Belleville Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. Do I have any public comment? It's not, yeah. Anything out there on Zoom or anything?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Do we have to read this? We don't, we can just accept it, right?
You can just make a motion to.
Okay.
Propose motion on your agenda.
Okay, uh, can I get a promote, propose motion on this item on the agenda?
Make a motion, I move the mayor to be authorized to sign a agreement, AGR 2023-14, FLPPA Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Okay. Go ahead, a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? We're all good?
I just want to thank Tim for the many, many hours that he spent in working with the city staff and the police to arrive at the agreement.
Yeah, actually, the thanks needs to go to Mandy. Gosh. Okay, um, thank you.
I just want to let most of the people know, because you were not at the workshop last Monday night, where we spent, what, uh, two hours with Jan, Tim, and everybody and the barg, and the head of the bargaining for the police, and they explained all the numbers, and we were all in agreement, and that the need to maintain a good pay scale so we can hire the officers we want, so it's, it's, it's all been research.
Anybody else? I'm going to make one comment. Um, my only comment is kind of what I was pushing back on last week. First of all, I'm in agreement with this, um, this proposed motion. I want the people in the City of Dunellen to recognize, like Rex you just said, um, our police officers in Dunellen went from being the lowest-paid police officers in this area for a town of this size to the highest, so I don't want to hear anything about underpaid policemen. But I do think we have to do this to get good quality of people here in this town. I, I recognize that. But I've been hearing for years that our police were underpaid, that was part of their gripe when they left. Uh, I think we have rectified that with this agreement, and, uh, that's all I got to say. All right, got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Good, all right. Next, number eight, agreement number one to parking, or excuse me, amendment number one to the parking agreement, AGR 2018-29, Robert E. and, what was it? Daley, um, Jewett, Dash Bluegate. Do I have any, um, public comments on this one? Okay? Anybody sign up or out there or anything?
No.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion on this? Okay, can I get a second? Okay, uh, any discussion on this one? All I'll say is, we have reviewed this parking agreement that's been in place for a number of years, well, basically since 2019, uh, five years, and we have raised the rent on this, uh, equal to inflation. to inflation. Any other discussion? All good? Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, number nine. Amendment number one to parking agreement AGR 2018-40, Ron where's it, Gears? Gears, okay. This is the parking area over off of 41. Do I have any public comments on this? Okay. I have a motion to accept this.
I move that the mayor be authorized to sign Amendment One to Parking Agreement ARG 2018-40 with Ronald Pierce as presented at the June 5th, 2023 workshop.
Okay. Uh, again, just for the public to know, uh, this was another parking agreement that was about to expire, been in force five years. Again, we're gonna raise the rent. Cost of inflation, basically the same as we did at BlueGator, in fact, it's about the same percentage. Any discussion up here?
We need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that a second? Okay. All right, sorry, I missed that. Any discussion up here? Anybody? We're good? Okay. So we got a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, okay. Item number 10, Resolution RES 20-23-08, charitable contributions. This is open for public comment. Any public comment? We're good?
I have one person left on Zoom, and it's the captioner.
It's the who?
It's the captioner.
Okay, I won't ask her before. All right, can I get a motion to, okay.
I move Resolution RES 2023-08 be read by title only.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion up here? All good? Okay. All right, we got a motion. By title only, do you have to read this, Mandy? Yeah, I thought you did.
Resolution number RES 2023-08, a resolution of the City of Dunellen creating city policy regarding charitable contributions, providing for severability conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay, good deal. All right. Do I have a proposed motion, um, to move that we approve this motion?
I move RES 2023-08 to be approved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Just for the public to understand, what we have done, uh, we, all the time, over the last few years, and while we have been sitting here, get charitable contribution requests from a lot of different charities. This pretty much is to inform everybody that we will no longer make charitable contribution of public funds from the City of Dunellen. Good. All right, number 11, Resolution RES 2023-09, proclamations. Do we have any public comment? All right. Nope, there's nobody out there, okay. All right, can I get a proposed motion to read this by title?
I move the Resolution 2023-09 be read by title only.
Now, second? Second. Okay, any discussion up here? All good there? Okay. I guess we have to vote on that, though.
Resolution number RES 2023-09, a resolution of the City of Dunellen creating city policy regarding proclamation requests, providing for severability conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay, good deal. All right, go ahead.
I move Resolution 2023-09 be approved.
Down a second?
Second.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? All right, um, for the public to understand this, what we're doing here is we get requests, again, for a lot of proclamations, all the time, from a lot of organizations. We will continue to do that, but we're going to limit it to local organizations and local events and local things. And the second part of this is, if we're requested to do a proclamation, the one making the request, assuming we accept it, will have to provide us the wording of this because this does take quite a bit of time for the staff to write the wording. All right. Oh, all right, number 12, Resolution RES 2023-10, council meeting and workshops scheduled. Any public comment? Yeah, well, it's really a correction of something that was done already, but we had some wording that kind of messed up, so we're just going back and correcting that wording. Okay, do we have any public comment? Doesn't appear that we do. Okay, do I have a proposed motion to read in title only?
I move Resolution 2023-10 to be read by title only.
Okay, do you want to have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All good? All in favor? I guess, Mandy, you gotta read it. Okay, I'm sorry.
Resolution? Well, no, you need a vote for me to read it, go ahead.
Okay. All in favor of Resolution 2023-10 to be read in by title only?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number RES 2023-10, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dunellen setting forth the time and place of its meetings, providing for severability conflicts and effective date.
Okay.
I move Resolution 2023-10 be approved.
Do you want to have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Again, this was some, we did this, and what it basically did was change our workshop meetings and our regular meetings. Workshops on Monday, regular meetings on Wednesday, but they're a week apart. There was some wording in that resolution when it was done that wasn't right, so this, it just corrects that wording. Okay, number 13, salary adjustments. Mr. N. Say.
Okay, we went through all the math and where the, um, where the money's coming from for all these rates, and the, uh, basically in a nutshell, what we're looking to do with this first vote is, uh, to adjust immediately the, uh, everybody that's under $14 an hour, I'm sorry, everybody that's under $15 an hour, and bring them up immediately to $15 an hour, and that would be three, four, five positions. The, uh, the money for this year's budget is in there because of all the vacancies that we have. The issue is, uh, public work, same issue we have with the police department, uh, we're not able to hire anybody of any, of the quality that we're looking for, um, for $12.75 an hour. And so we want to raise the hiring wage to 15. We want to bring the present service worker, that is a service worker, one right now, to service worker two, um, as of his anniversary, well, and those would be as of immediately, to, uh, $16.12. Then the, uh, the other three positions would be the two hiring positions that we're looking at, bring them from $12.75 to $15. The, uh, part-time AP clerk from $14.75 to $15. The working coordinator, which, uh, from $14.78 to $15. And the, uh, police department staff assistant from $14 to $15. Should we vote separately, Mandy, on the ones we want to do now, immediately, versus the ones we want to do in October? My other question about the October one is, do we want to do that during the budget process, or do that now?
Essentially, it will be, you will be approving the October one salary in the budget.
Okay.
If you approve the budget, you'll be approving those salaries.
That's what
If you're going to make the initial adjustment effective immediately, you would need to make a motion, which includes the date, um, if it's June 15th, it's June 15th.
Okay.
Um, or today, I mean, you have to decide what date you want to make that effective, if you want to make it effective July 1st, but I know you, as one of the council members, has said that you wanted it to become effective immediately.
Right, for these positions, right.
Yes. So that would require a motion tonight to make that effective immediately, and the other piece of that that we worked on would be incorporated into the budget approval.
That's, that's kind of where I was going to. Okay, cool, thank you. So I make a motion that the positions that we just mentioned that are below $15 an hour be raised to $15 an hour. The service worker that's presently a service worker one becomes a service worker two, uh, and that position is paid $16.12 an hour.
Okay? Second?
I'm sorry, I need to finish the motion, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, effective tomorrow, immediately, I'm not sure how to do that one.
I mean, it, it, immediately, when everybody comes to work tomorrow, they'll get a new rate.
Fine.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? We all good up here?
Counsel, you just do need to take public comment.
All right, I, I just remembered that when I asked. Uh, does anybody in the public have a comment about pay raises? What we're trying to do is get everybody at least to $15 an hour. Is there any public comment on that? Yes, David?
A date quarter 11835 East Blue Cove Drive in Dunellen. Um, it's associated with pay, pay wages and stuff like that. I encourage you, because you've looked at this so much, to continue and finish it. So we have some open positions as far as the manager of, uh, planning, community development, code enforcement, and, uh, those positions historically have been open for long periods of time, and we can't get quality people, or qualified people, which indicates, with Dunellen being a very nice place to live, and an excellent staff to work with, that it must be paid. So I think you've done an excellent job of looking at all the wages, let's finish the job. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Okay, any discussion up here? We all good? All right, we got a motion, in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes. Uh, I do agree with David, I think as we go through this process with the rest of the staff, we've got to take a hard look at the pay that we've been paying all of our staff now. When we address the police, we're starting to address the very low end of the scale. I think we have to face the fact that, um, like you said, David, we're not getting quality applicants for these positions. We need to look at everyone's pay here in this town and get it to the right number. All right. Did you have anything else?
Yes, sir.
You're good, all right. Department head reports.
I have one thing I need to talk to you all about. Typically, whenever the city council schedules a special meeting, it's on a specific subject, and we don't deviate from that. You follow your normal meeting protocol, um, we don't typically allow people to come and you add it to the agenda to make presentations and whatnot.
Right.
However, I have been, um, asked to, uh, discuss this with you about any future short-term rental, uh, special workshops. Ms. Katie Geis has asked to be placed on a future agenda as a presenter, so that she is allowed more than three minutes to talk. So I just need some guidance from you on whether or not you will
I'm sorry, Mandy, who, who's
Your question? Katie Geis.
Katie Dunn.
Katie Geis.
Kay.
Katie Geis.
Oh, Katie Geis, thank you.
Okay.
Do I have any comments on that?
My comment around the, uh, the whole short-term rental thing is, is, um, um, we need to go through this process, first understand the rules, um, what we think, uh, as a council, and staff input, attorney input. The rules first, what we agree to, then, uh, how it's going to be administered, um, who's going to do what, uh, flow chart or chart, and then associate, uh, expenses with all of that. And then after all that is done, seems to me would be the appropriate time, um, for presentations and stuff like that, because right now, we don't even know what it's going to look like, um, and so people are going to be speculating what it might look like, and, uh, you'll see that using the, uh, time, uh, that, we don't even know what we have yet. Once we know what this animal looks like, then it'd be time to listen to, uh, everybody, where they're, uh, where they have problems with it, et cetera, et cetera, and then we can adjust from there.
I'd like to make a comment, and that is, um, I disagree with Tim. I think the public can get educated through their fellow residents here, and we should give people an opportunity to, uh, input.
I'll speak to that next.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think that, uh, Planning Commission Chair had shared with us that the majority of the planning meetings were spent taking feedback from both the short-term rental owners and the residents, and I was at those meetings, and it's, there was an overwhelming amount of feedback that was taken at that time. So I, I see what Tim is saying about, you know, we're not even quite sure what we have yet, um, and the most recent comments we've gotten, when we went through the last workshop, it was, I don't know, a little bit disappointing to me that the comments that we got afterwards were about all the things that we didn't talk about. So we talked about the first half of the ordinance, and all the public comment was about the second half of the ordinance. So I agree that we're getting a lot of feedback, and even outside of city meetings, emails, things that people are sharing, it is, it's about the cost, it's about a lot of different things that we haven't even had the opportunity to speak to yet. I think if we do grant one person, um, seven to 10 minutes to make comment, that we do run the risk then of having a lot more people from both sides of the coin come and want to do that, and I'm really, you know, interested in keeping these, um, special workshops focused. So I would tend to agree that there has been a lot of public input, and there definitely will be opportunities for that after we get the ordinance situated.
I'd like to respond. I'd like to, um, ask our attorney his thoughts on this. Uh, it is an open meeting, does the public not have the right to input?
What Florida I'm sorry?
I said, it, it's, it's going to be an open meeting, therefore, doesn't the public have the right to, um, make comment, even in the form of a presentation, 10 minutes?
What Florida law requires is that public comment on any decision item be taken somewhere along the process. So if it's going through the planning board, at some point, there has to be public comment. You can have workshops and take no public comment as long as before the decision is made, that there is an opportunity for public comment. So when you're having a special workshop, public comment does not need to be taken at a special workshop, that's at the election of city council, if city council wants to take it. It does need to be taken somewhere before the decision is made. So this is completely within the realm of discretion of city council, when and how they want to take public comment. The fact of the matter is, once this ordinance gets to first and second reading, that's when public comment has to be taken. One of the things I'll point out, too, is if this ordinance is substantially modified as council is discussing doing, and whatever direction council goes in, in that case, it will need to go back to planning, not for another whole workshop series, but at least for a review for comprehensive plan consistency, and at that point in time, public comment will be taken there, too, because that's a decision for the planning commission. So you do have junctures where public comment is required to be taken. How city council operates during the workshops, whether or not, and to what extent you want to take public comment, as long as it's in line with your policies, you can proceed accordingly. So to answer your question, um, Councilwoman Covage, yes, public comment absolutely has to be taken, but, you know, council does have some discretion as to how and when to take it.
Thank you.
Just has to be in the decision process.
Rex, you got it?
Okay, I'd just like to ask Jan a question. Jan, every business that's in Dunellen has to, has to register and get a license, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. So basically, I'm in charge of working at the short-term rentals. This is called an ordinance, but basically, it comes down to two areas. One is the registration, getting the license, and two, what we want to do, what we want in the license pertaining to occupancy and parking and other things as required by state law. So the first part of it is, if we don't put an ordinance in requiring them to get registered, then we've excluded half, every, every other business. then we've excluded half, every other business who's got, who we are making get a license. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Well, are you talking about a business tax receipt?
No, the business, to register your business to work in Dunellen, you've got to get a, you've got to get some kind of registration, right?
The business tax receipt. Now, that being said, when it comes to short-term rentals, per the city's, per the city's business tax receipt ordinance, business tax receipts need to be issued for situations where an individual, company, et cetera, some sort of entity has two or more. So if you have a, according to Dunellen's current code, if there is a single short-term rental, Dunellen's ordinance does not require that. And there's an issue with changing the city's ordinance, because that's essentially been frozen pursuant to state law and preempted. So the city can keep what's on the books, but changing the law is problematic when it comes to business tax receipts.
Right.
New classes can't be opened.
Okay, so just so clear, a business has to register to do business in Dunellen and get a, something for the taxes or something?
Well, it's not a registration, that's a tax, a business tax. It used to be called an occupational license, and there, it was more of a, and this is a long time ago, but it was more like a registration. Now it's just simply a tax. And if that's paid, unless a business is doing business in Cuba, a business tax receipt has to be issued. So it's only payment of a tax, not a registration.
Okay.
What's going through, or what's being considered from, with short-term rentals, anytime that an individual has two or more, they're going to have to get a business tax receipt. But the registration process is different and on top of that business tax receipt. Business tax receipt is just an exchange of money for a piece of paper.
Okay. Because I've been doing, I've been talking to fire marshals and stuff, I've got some more information for all of you, I've sent some of it to Mandy to put out, so that we have a clearer idea. So, and I did talk today to find out how many, how many other municipalities in Marion County are working on starting these kind of ordinance? And evidently, we're one of the first because we've got one of the largest draws.
If I could just interject, I definitely appreciate the conversation, but if we could stick to the subject of...
Okay, I understand.
Public comments versus special presentations, I think that would be...
I think that would be...
But it is a great conversation to have at the July, to have a broader conversation. Thank you. Thank you, Juliana.
Yeah, I was thinking we're getting a little bit off here, but that's okay. I have just a couple things.
Hold on a minute. We want to get to the end of the request for the...
Okay, all right.
Special...
We can do that?
I'm Laishan, with Southwest Florida Water Management District. And I would like to make a presentation at our next workshop.
Okay, we're still talking about this right here, right now.
This started with...
We're trying to figure out, will somebody speak at a special meeting?
We're on department head reports right now.
Right.
We're on department head reports.
Right.
And I have this issue that I need some guidance from you all, as to whether or not you will allow us to add people requesting special presentations to a special workshop agenda.
Okay. Would I have, I'm about to have a vote on that. So would somebody please make a motion that we want to allow someone to make a presentation at a special workshop on one particular item? Of 10 minutes.
If the actual motion should take public comment on that, it's going to be taken up.
Okay. Do I have any public comment?
So Willie, just to clarify, what we're trying to discern is whether it's going to be seven to 10 minutes on a special presentation, or the standard three minutes.
Right.
Okay.
But this party is asking, I believe, for, asking permission for present a presentation, which is more than the standard time limit.
Yeah, she wants 10 minutes, I got it.
And that's what we're trying to discern right now.
Okay.
I can make a suggestion, if you would like me to?
I would just get a unanimous decision, or not unanimous decision, of whether we're going to allow somebody to speak at a special commission, at a special meeting.
Well, if you would like to...
Okay. Personally, I don't think we should, but that's just me. But because you'll have plenty of opportunity later to do it, but I want to get a vote on this. Do I have a motion?
Okay. I make a motion that we not allow special presentations during the workshops.
Special workshop.
Special workshop, right, okay. Do I have a second? A second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of not allowing a presentation at a special workshop of any subject? Can we continue, do some discussion? Sure. Cartel Blanche, no, was never my intent anyways. At a certain point, when we're getting, when we have everything that we stated before in place, I would be willing to listen to what either side has to say, just not while we're going through the process and trying to figure out what's what.
I have one more comment also. I think because of the letter that this party has sent the council, I think you're showing prejudice against her.
How so, Jan?
I think she's spoken for hours in the planning group, so she doesn't need to speak now.
She sent the letter and a, kind of like a mini spreadsheet.
I received it.
She would leave the expenses associated with implementing short-term rental ordinance. And I think you're showing prejudice against her, because we know where you all stand.
I want to say, Jan, that I appreciate you speaking on the short-term rental subject at this time, and I hope that you'll join us at the next special workshop.
I intend to.
So that you can, so that you can talk a little bit about how you're feeling about it, because when you leave, we can't have the conversation. I received the spreadsheet, this group has not reviewed anything about financial responsibilities yet, so while we can look at the spreadsheet in the email, and we can definitely take that into account for our conversation, I think that we really run a risk of going sideways if we have people from the public now starting to present spreadsheets and ideas about the cost and have... We have thoughts about cost, they're worked into the ordinance, and we need an opportunity to present that to the public before the public starts inundating us with their feelings on it. So I feel strongly that we need to, and I hope that Katie Geis and others would understand that if we can put the whole ordinance out and talk about it, that at that time it would be appropriate for a special presentation. Right now, we're getting a lot of feedback on things that we haven't even had the opportunity to discuss as a council. So we're not shutting people out, we're just saying, hey, could you let us have another meeting to speak our part, and then we'll take your feedback. Thank you.
I'd like to add, Jan, I'm not biased one way or another. I don't know what this animal looks like, except for the portion that we went through last week. So I don't have enough information to vote one way or another. I just want to go through the process, see how it falls out, because I really don't know which way I'm going to go.
Okay, as long as I understand that this council will allow people to continue input. Will require to do so, then we can always...
We have to.
Okay, and I'm talking about in the form of a presentation or...
Whatever they want to, right. Once we understand what it's about, and they may understand more, may take care of some of their, whichever side may take care of, either side may answer some of their questions or concerns, once we've gone through this thing.
And here's my point, it's not about me personally. And if you're disagreeing with me, that's fine, it's about conversing with this person is what you're doing now, and I hope they understand your decision and our decision.
Right. I actually called Katie Geis, okay, and explained my position to her over the weekend, actually Monday, okay, and explained my thoughts, want to get, need to get through this process, because we don't even understand what it looks like. And everything just mentioned right here, mentioned to Katie, I don't want to speak for Katie, but she understood, and I walked away with, she even agreed, you know?
We had been in communication with her as well.
Me too.
You guys are great.
Yeah, so we're reaching out to those that...
We all have to talk to Katie.
Right, we're reaching out to those that are reaching out to us. You know, just trying to let them understand where we're at in the process. And what Katie actually asked me, if maybe it would help if we kind of laid out the process at the next meeting, hey, you know, kind of like what we just did with budget stuff, you know, in this meeting here, tend on looking at this, then we look and look at this, and here's the process. So I'll try to get something worked up before that, get it out to Mandy, so we can explain to everybody, here's where we're going. And at some point in there, it probably will make sense to even say, at this point, we'll take public comments, presentations, et cetera, and then everybody can take a look at it, and tweak it, do whatever everybody sees fit.
Okay.
I agree with all this discussion. I personally agree that we don't even know what this ordinance is going to look like yet, and we haven't even gotten through it. I think we as a council, I know me personally have read numerous versions of this, I'm going to start reading all the case law on both sides of this, to understand where the issues are, who's getting sued, why they're getting sued, and what the outcome of those cases are. I think we all need to come up with, all right, from A to Z, are we going to have an ordinance, and what does it look like? And we come to an agreement. Once we come to an agreement, like Andrew said, we're going to have to send this back, I can tell you, to Plan and Zoning to get their input. The public would have time to speak there, and then the public will have time to speak after they see what our ordinance even looks like. But for them to come in in the middle when we haven't even got an ordinance, I don't think adds anything, it's just going to delay the conversation. And I want to get through this, because I either want to have an ordinance or not have an ordinance, but I want to get through it so we know where we're going. And until the public knows what our ordinance is, or what we're trying to do, and understands it, I don't think they can come in and ask questions, because they really don't know what to ask. They're going to ask questions, we not, not even put that in order. So I'd rather them see the ordinance, then come in, we will absolutely allow the public speak. And if we have two or three people that want to do presentations, we'll do a special workshop and give them all time to do their presentation. But I think the next presentation, or next workshop we have on short-term rentals ought to be with us. So we get through the rest of this. Like you said, we got through about half of it, I hope the next one, we get through the rest of it. And then pick and choose what we like, pick and choose what we don't like, come up with something, and then move on. So my answer to your starting question was, do we want to allow her to speak at a next special workshop on short-term rentals at this time? You may want to clarify that, because we really shouldn't single out Katie. No, anybody. Right, right, but we said her. Okay. I'm not trying to mince words, just want to make sure that everybody understands. The other thing I'd like everybody to understand is, the "they" is whoever's on either side of this coin, all around the point or in anything, there's no, the "they" is everybody. Right.
Basically, no matter who paid the request.
Right.
If somebody comes in here and they just, they don't have an opinion one way or another, but they want to make a presentation in a special workshop.
Right.
Are you going to allow that?
That's what it basically is, yeah.
My answer is no.
Because your special workshops, now...
It's for a special subject.
But the past councils have been very adamant. When they schedule a special workshop, they want it to be for them to hash out and talk about, and vet whatever it is that they've done on the agenda, and not be, not a lot of time be taken up by special presentations. So I just want to make sure that you are of that same mindset.
Yes, ma'am.
I am.
I am. But again, I want to make everybody understand that's out there in Zoom Zoom land or listening to this, that's not to say this council will not take your opinions and not allow you to speak, because we will. But while we're trying to work through this ordinance, which is going to be very, I see coming up, very complex, and decide, we leave this in, we take this out, whatever we do. I don't, I like what you said about the prior councils, we don't allow you to speak until we get through, come up with something, then you can come in and speak all you want.
And right now, they would have three minutes.
Right.
And if at some point in the future, you want to, you have the discretion, you get to a point and you say, okay, I know we got, you guys have a lot to say, can't say it in three minutes, I'm going to give everybody five minutes.
Right, right, we can do that.
We have that discretion.
We can do that. I'm all for it, okay. So I would say no to a 10-minute conversation.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anything else?
Okay. Any other department head?
Jan, I just have one thing I forgot to say, the budget workshop, the budget workshop's July 3rd, it's at 3:00 PM, same place.
July 3rd?
July 3rd, yes.
How dare you? Right before the 4th.
Yes. Then you can just chew on what we're discussing that meeting, you're going to have a whole day off at fireworks.
We're going to need a day off? But that's good, I totally get it, got it.
Don't have anything else.
Okay?
Chad?
Chad?
I got it. Chad's last time.
Chad, you want a microphone?
All of the run...
Thank you.
All the run signs ordered, 21 in total. Should receive them next week, they're being finished. Check that off. City Hall, entrance, times are put up, the do not enter and one-way signs are in.
Right.
Next week, we're going to start painting the curb stops out there, the parking stops, and working on the directional arrow signs and possibly the parking lines. It's on the agenda.
Good.
For now, it's on the agenda. All solar panels for the security cameras are installed in it and all working, have them done. We found in the city beach, we relocated the do not feed gator signs, and be aware of gator signs, don't know where they was at. City beach is back open now, we decided to make that decision yesterday to open the beach, the moss and stuff's been cleared out, the gators, the trouble gator seems to be absent. So we haven't any issues with him, he hasn't been coming up, he hasn't been chasing anybody, so we're, actually good there for now.
Good.
Did Ernie Mills Park clean up with the volunteers? So we've got most of that, we did the exterior buildings that face the park and stuff's been pressure washed, cleaned, and the blue bird boxes were installed. Yeah, gave me a couple assignments last workshop, I was checking on city-owned properties. Found out we had 32 parcels in the city area.
What?
Five of them, 32, I have a list. So I've got my time on that. But we do own 32 parcels in the city, which we have five structures on that are eligible for fire inspections. Fire inspections have not been done. One of the issues was the art center, so I reached out to Marion County Fire, I talked with Mr. John Penning, he's a fire inspector, asked him what last inspection was done on that building, said they've never done inspection ever on one of them. Asking about the other ones, I already seen the call, there hasn't been inspection done. In the city of Dunellen, we have 218 commercial buildings. And he said as of three years ago, Florida established a law that buildings need inspection. I asked him about ours, when inspections will be done? He said as of now, they do not have the manpower to do that, they do not have the program in place, but they're working on that to get that established. It's kind of concerning to me, that all of it's not being done.
So Chad, is there a vehicle that we can request the five city-owned buildings to request somehow in writing a form, whatever they have?
I asked him what the procedure was, a request to that, he said Kelly actually has a form to request a fire inspection, it's at forty dollars per building, cost would be to us, to being our buildings, for the first inspection, and if there's a re-inspection, it'd be additional forty dollars for that inspection also.
Chad, is there a provision in there, since they're undermanned and they can't do the inspections, where we could contact a source and have a licensed source that we could refer people to?
I'd have to ask Mandy, I believe you guys could hire any fire inspector who's inspections in the state of Florida, but it's state, Florida state certified.
Yeah.
But I believe it might be part of a contract with them if they provide that, but I don't know if they have any.
I know, but the problem is, if they don't have the manpower to do it for all of our buildings, could we then have a backup state for to certify fire inspectors that we could refer them to?
We don't, that I know of, I know we just use Marion Fire as, without committing and stuff like that to do inspections on requests, as now because of their own manpower.
Would it be reasonable to submit the forms for our five buildings, and then see what they come back with once we submit the...
and then see what they come back with once we submit the forms officially? You know, a phone call is one thing. It's kind of easy to say we don't have the manpower and stuff, but when they receive a form, then we should receive something back at that point kind of officially, and then we can regroup and go from there?
I think being the properties are the city and the testo, but I think we're legally obligated to have inspections to make sure the buildings-
Right.
Safe, they have lights and emergency, and everything's ready to go.
Right, right. But we do the formal request, and then we'll see what the result is, and then go from there. And just for our five city buildings, then we'll figure out the rest of the city later.
If you will be to go back to the earlier discussion, what we were talking about with the agreement. The Section Four specifically states fire prevention services. County shall provide fire prevention services within the corporate limits of city. These activities include fire safety inspections, plans reviewed, fire code enforcement, and other associated fire prevention services. So it goes on to say county has sole authority as the authority having jurisdiction regarding state laws, the Florida Fire Prevention Code, and fire safety-related local ordinances. Cities shall collect and remit fees to county on a monthly basis for fire prevention services on behalf of county at rates established by the county. So what that tells me is that they will do it for us, but they will probably require payment.
Gotcha. And what I noticed in the budget is we have a line item in there. I don't remember what it was, three thousand, four thousand, something like that, for fire inspection under our buildings and stuff, I believe. Gotcha, couldn't remember the number. Okay.
We have that in whose budget?
Your budget?
Not for city buildings. It's fire safety inspections through community development and the community. But we don't have the specific expense to inspect our buildings.
Okay.
That wasn't put in Chad's budget under the apparently-
Okay, maybe that's what I see. I got it confused. I'll take a look at it.
So if that's something we need to add, you get it all out and under your 01518 apartment. And tell me what to put under fire department, city hall, the art center, optical tech building.
I think being city by owns, by city, we're obligated to have an inspection to make sure all the systems-
It sounds like we're looking at $200.
No, it's forty dollars inspection.
Right, forty times five.
And the re-inspections, we have to make adjustments.
So just give me a list of where to code it. I can add it for the next version that I produce.
Right. Before we get off of that one, I just want to throw a caution out there. We very well could be opening up Pandora's box too, once they do the inspection. So be ready.
I think you're opening up either way and don't do it.
I agree with you. No, you're right. I agree with you. Right. We have to follow the law. We don't have a choice.
Right.
But, you know, can't be surprised if all of a sudden we fail something.
Right.
So should we go ahead and budget for repairs just in case?
Might want to consider that.
Right.
Also, we, one of the things was we wanted to do a check on the art center. One of the discussions was the roof being replaced. Roof was never replaced. There was no damage to the roof. It's air conditioning, there's sweating, tile. So that stuff was replaced. And also, we contacted three companies on painting the exterior of that building. They'll have all three quotes by next week.
Okay.
Compare that to what we'd have them do or worse, we did it ourselves. I believe that wraps up my-
Before we move on from Chad, I have to brag a little bit. Tell y'all something because it's so near and dear to my heart. This is what the status looked like before. This was your entrance sign at city hall. Here was your exit sign at city hall. And I think when this picture was taken, it had both sides. And before Chad took them down, it only had one side. And this is what's out there now.
I see it's working too. I saw a boat going right down that.
I saw them come in and then go back out.
So if nobody had noticed the signs, Jen, I really wanted y'all to see what a great job that is.
They came in the entrance, but they went out the entrance.
Kelly, you got anything? Always have some. I know we've got bigger fish to fry, but we are at like three hundred and fifty-some permits processed for the year so far. And we still have a few months to go. I think last year, we didn't even make it out of the, even to the mid-three hundreds.
Right. Great.
Talking back to the priority project list that I had sent y'all previously, I have reprioritized some things, and I need to get fee schedule updated so there will be an ordinance coming to cover the cost of all the services that get done. And restructuring, community development, obviously, we have lots of options that we need to put on paper and present to you, and I'm hoping to do that next month. Working on the current zoning, future land use map, just to be sure because it's a little wonky and it is an act of Congress to call the company and actually get them to update that map. Boundary lines are off. There's just various things. FEMA flood maps aren't accurate on everything, so we need to get that resolved. FEMA floodplain administrator thing will come after we figure out the restructuring of community development and who that responsibility should lie with. I do need guidance from y'all though because I started working on the holiday event last prior year to reserve things that we need for December events. To Tim's point earlier, should be budgeting a year ahead for that kind of thing. So deposit money that needs to be given out this fiscal year to start reserving things. I don't believe it's in the budget. I don't know that we even have anywhere we could pull it from, but food for thought if we can come up with a way to make that happen. Otherwise, we're waiting till the last minute, and then we don't get anything.
Right.
And that's just people walking around. And that's all I have.
So Kelly, with the holiday thing kind of imminent, are you going to bring back some ideas or numbers or, I don't know, just thoughts?
Well, and so Sharon at Public Works is helping with this, and she's called around and gotten votes for things like fancy houses and stuff. But the conversation kind of stopped when they said, you know, fifty percent deposit. I don't even know if that's feasible, so we were like, thank you, have a nice day. I need to figure out how we can get that resolved before we can even move forward on that. Yes, I'll bring quotes to you in July for the items and the layout of what we have planned.
Okay, because I think the last two years, we saw the Santa in the park, and that was successful in some ways. It was planned very last minute. So, you know, I think it's, we're in a tough situation being, going into July with Christmas. And I know I said it in another meeting that we might, you know, we might be bare bones for a year until we can get ahead of it. So I'll look forward to the conversation on that.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
Chief?
Oh, chief, yeah.
First item, chairs we can fit in.
We have special chairs back there that don't have arms for them, just for those who wear those.
All right.
Yeah, you got to sit on, you got to sit on this side.
With police fire, everything's going good. Thank you all very much, everything you did today, the pay raises for the people that were getting to come in. That's going to be critical for us. Evidence room is completed. The shared department will be giving us a little memo about what they found. And if you all want it, I will share it with you once it comes out. Other than that, things are going good. I don't really, I think I've been in contact with you all so much that you're pretty much up to date. Anybody have any questions for me? Right now?
When are we getting the mounted patrol?
It is, she has the budget.
How are we doing for officers for, for hiring people? How many we got and what are our prospects?
We just did probably, let's say roughly around eight interviews. We got probably four offer letters that are going to go out tomorrow. That's really, we got some good candidates that they recommended to go through. The only thing is the other ones have no experience.
Yeah.
So we're looking to see if we get some experience right now. Just because it's going to take some time to train people right directly out of the academy.
Right.
But we're looking at it and see what we got. And we got a deadline in our head that we're shooting the meet so the shared department doesn't have to be here forever.
Okay.
You know, just an idea, since we're going to have a lot of inexperienced people, and I know you all want to get out of here, but Keybus Game had their own fire department, and they got one run a day. So they had a reciprocal deal with the city where they would send their rescue crews to our rescue, to our station, and our guys go down there to rest. Would there be any way that maybe we could work out a switch with Marion County to where our officers could ride over there and get some of their more extensive training and then come back over here for a couple shifts?
I will answer that too with a one-on-one.
Okay. Just an idea.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Glad you're aboard. Full time.
Me too.
All right. All right, let's see. We got council liaison reports and comments.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, go ahead.
Liaison for Southwest Florida Water Management District. Southwest Florida Water Management District is managing eighty-eight acres at this time within the Denellin city limits. Okay, and this was the former, I guess he ran his property in 2019. He sold to Swift Mud in a real quick deal, one hundred and eleven acres for $4.2 million. Swift Mud, within six months, deeded that property, I should say Florida DEP, deeded that property to Rainbow Springs State Park. Okay, this is the property, a very small part of it fronts 484. If you turn left on 190th Avenue Road, which is opposite, what is the name of that road? The one that goes to the baseball field. Yeah, thank you very much. Bridge, South Bridges. And if you're, okay, so if you're leaving Denellin, you turn left at South Bridges, you'll be on 190th Avenue Road. And it's a hundred and eleven acre parcel. Now, part of the deal when they transferred that property and deeded at the Rainbow Springs State Park, there was an addendum or attachment, strangely enough, that said that Southwest Florida Water Management District would manage eighty-eight acres of that property. Southwest Florida Water Management District wants to be in the longleaf pine plantation business, apparently, because for four and a half years, they've been trying to kill the beehia and coastal Bermuda grass. And this is pretty astounding. They have spent $170,000 on herbicides and disking on that eighty-eight acres. And why should we be concerned? Because we're kind of like the watchmen over the Rainbow River. That property slopes like that into the wetlands along the Rainbow River. There's, they've denuded the property except for weeds. And the weeds are not holding the soil together. It's blowing away, there's erosion out there. And the other thing about this whole thing, and I'm going to try to say this best, because I know everybody's butts are getting sore, is that we were denied, the city of Denellin was denied a required workshop in hearing with Florida Parks and Recreation. If, when the state of Florida DEP buys a property that becomes a state park and it is within a community, they are required to give the community a workshop with literally a committee. They want representatives from the community to meet with representatives from Florida DEP because the community, and it's all online, is supposed to give input as to how that property might be utilized in a low environmental impact situation. Okay, so Dale Burns, okay, was mayor, and he sent a letter asking for the time and date of the meeting. And I made repeated quests, requests for the meeting. Daniel Albritton was the director of Florida Parks and Recreation at the time. I have a slew of emails asking him, when are we going to have the meeting? And he refused to answer. Okay, so this gets complicated. And again, if you go online, they have a list of requirements that the state is supposed, Florida DEP is supposed to follow through when park property is bought within a community. So I don't know if you want to go anywhere with this, ask questions. And I'm getting, going to get with Rainbow River Conservation because I don't see where Swift Mud is using taxpayer money wisely in this effort to make pasture land into a longleaf pine restoration. And the deal is you can't plant a seedling that will survive unless you kill all the beehia and the coastal grass. And what they, the idea is to kill all that grass and plant wire grass and then put the seedlings in. Well, they've been playing around this property for five years, and they don't have the first seedling in. I have concerns. It's crazy.
Jen, do you have any suggestions on next steps? Like, I'm just trying to-
I know, it's a long story.
Jen, I don't understand. I know what you're talking about, okay?
You know the property?
The property I hunt, well, I know about that property because it's right up the road from my house. But, you know, we have areas in Georgia I hunt that are pines. And when they come out in timber, you know, they come, the first thing they do because of the issue with all the underground, they burn it. They don't use herbicide. They just burn it. And the temperature usually gets hot enough, you can take care of that. And then they immediately, they'll plant the new trees. They don't wait years.
See, that's my concern too. The amount of herbicides and what they're using, y'all know what Roundup is, right? They're using something a whole lot worse. They're using a mix of Roundup and 24D. And 24D is a, it's a top of the chart, that and dicant, the Canberra, probably using that too. It's literally outlawed in most areas that if it's near a waterway or not supposed to use it.
Right, no, I agree.
Okay.
Total disregard. Go figure, Southwest Florida Water Management District. So I don't know. Y'all want to get together and write an inquiry letter and have one of the representatives come here?
Might want to have them-
You're a great writer, Jen. If you wrote the letter, we would go through it.
Yeah, and the council can review the letter. I want to put them on the grill. And again, this is taxpayer money. And then there's that issue about we never got our public hearing workshop. Says you have to have it. It's online at their site.
Right. Well, that might be an answer if you would write a letter and bring it to us, and let's all review it, and we'll, the whole council. I mean, I'm like you, that doesn't make sense.
It doesn't.
Yeah, it'd be a great opportunity to educate ourselves and the public.
Right, right.
Thanks, Jen.
And bring them in here so we can hear from them.
Right, right. All right. Anybody else got a liaison report?
Just real fast, Michelle and I met with the Torres Development lady. They approved, right?
We did.
And they have a very nice app that they're putting out to advertise everything. I don't have the name of the app now.
There's some pamphlets on the table up front.
But she also said that they're working on a grant, a bunch of grant money, right? I think it was seventy-five. Have they approved that, do you know?
I, they, she said that they were going to discuss it at the meeting for approval.
But anyway, they're looking at a bunch, say seventy-five thousand dollars of grants that anybody can apply for to use to promote their public-
Businesses. It's for promotion- Businesses, it's for promotion for business. I believe that, she said it was $5,000 each.
Yes.
It was available to all Marion County, anyone in Marion County. It was not specific to any area. And the total funding was $75,000. And she just wanted to make sure it got utilized so that next year she can ask for twice as much.
Has Judy Tewillinger been informed of this?
Judy was at the meeting, yes ma'am. Yeah, Judy's at the meetings when we meet.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And this is something that businesses could apply for on their own, independent of anything that's happening here?
It is totally independent of the city.
Okay, great.
When it is up and running, she stated that they would have links on their website for people to go in and fill out the application and such. But it was something that we could promote to people. It's, you know, it's to help people have signage in different places to bring them in. Like, so Den Allen businesses could pay for signage and put it in Ocala on 200 and to draw people into our community is really the intent of it.
Gotcha, all right, okay, good deal. I have one thing. We've talked around it most of the night. I'm going to request another short-term round meeting at y'all's convenience. And I would hope we could do it sometime the rest of this month, all those months getting away from.
Just, council, I will not be here as a reminder, 19, 20, and 21, I'll be at my FACC conference.
Right. Okay.
Well, the only trouble is then we have a meeting following Monday.
Yeah, no, I would like to try to do it next week, but it's got to be a week from today.
Oh, you can do it long on down.
No, no, I get that. What I'm saying is we could do it on 21st, except you won't be here. If that works with everybody else.
That's fine.
Does that, if that doesn't work for you?
I'm sorry, what date did you say?
21st, but if that doesn't work for you?
No, I have a liaison meeting on the 21st at 5:30.
What about 22nd?
22nd, I'm good.
22nd?
We're talking July, right?
No, June.
I'm talking June. What's the date?
22nd, it's the Thursday.
I can do the 22nd.
Yeah, I think that's your birthday, so don't come. No, seriously, but I do think we got to, we got to have another meeting. And my goal would be to finish what we started.
What about the 26th? That gives you a whole week before your next meeting.
26th works for me. Work for y'all?
Yeah.
All right, we're doing 26th. What time do y'all want to start?
Early.
Early, 4:30?
Yep.
All right, 4:30. Julianne, what works for you?
4:30.
4:30, all right. I just want to make sure we get it down. 4:30, because I want to, I would hope, and I know y'all are like me, trying to read all this stuff and get as knowledgeable about it all because every time I read something, I get
Do you have a pen there that writes this?
Different opinion, but I'd like to hope we can get through this. Like you said, we got through the first half, but everybody's asking about second half because that's the most boards up. So I want to, I know I'm going to do a lot of reading from now on in. Okay. Sure. Kelly, on your priority list, were you asking for help prioritizing? Like, do we need to set up a, at least a?
I think I got a handle on the prioritization. It was more of getting on the radar so we can have a conversation probably at the July meeting with direction on, are we allowed to do deposits? If so, where's money coming from? And if not, fine, I know what I'm dealing with. I just need to know what.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was talking about the whole list in general. I didn't know if we need to have a, have you as far as a workshop? If you were asking for help prioritizing what we thought?
No, no.
Okay, I just didn't want to leave you hanging.
I mean, there was a lot more on that that I think you guys read on your own way back when I sent this that I'm not going to bring up now. I just brought up the top five things that I think.
Okay, I just want to make sure we just, I don't think you're hanging, you're asking.
No.
I weigh in, you know, it's your council comment.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I, as you know, have a full-time job and I haven't had, I don't have much time at all to be down here. So I think Kelly is obviously super confident. She
I agree.
Knows everything that she's talking about. But I almost heard an offer for you to remove various, or for the council to have a conversation about it. And because I really am unable to invest some of the time that all of you are investing in these departments, I would ask for that help for either, you know, you or for the council to have that conversation about prioritizing. Not because I think Kelly can't do it or isn't, wouldn't do it properly, but because I think that she really deserves the attention from the council that some of the other departments had, have given, that I simply am unable to provide.
Okay, can we add that to one of the workshops? Because I wasn't looking to give you help you didn't want either.
I'll take it.
Okay, good.
Why don't, why don't we schedule a meeting first? Why don't maybe you and Kelly, I'll sit down together and just have a meeting first.
Okay.
Try to go over everything and then if there are things that we can't get resolved,
Okay.
then we can bring it to council.
Okay, gotcha, cool. Okay, does anybody got anything else? One more thing. I want to let everybody know it's mowing season. It's on, okay? We have two, well, the boss is out mowing, the other one is out mowing. Everybody's on a lawnmower nonstop, plus all the daily emergencies that come up. So for the next, until we get through October, all right, we need everybody to use the process. If they can't get on the computer to create a, to create a work request, come in here. They can talk to Loretta, whoever, get on the work request. But the 15 minutes here, the half hour here of people going to grab a chat, grabbing a mat, okay, it's really adding up big time. And so we don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. I've asked Chad to put that out to them, okay? Have them contact me, whatever you need to do. But, you know, these guys are so shorthanded and so busy at this point in time that we, we got to quit, we got to get more efficient with everybody pulling them up tonight. Thank you. Okay, Andrea, you ready?
I am, two minutes less, of course, and I only have one thing for you, council. Just since you're looking at comp planning and a couple other things potentially coming up, I wanted to put something out there that might work, may not work, but that you all can keep in mind. When I was teaching as professor at the University of Florida Law School, I did a lot of work with the conservation clinic, supervising, working with students there. Also, actually, that's how I got into municipal law originally because it was a city, they did a lot of work with St. Augustine. Conservation clinic isn't just conservation. They do land use and environmental issues, real-time projects with cities, with other clients that come through the university. Long-term head of that department, mentor of mine has just retired. I spoke to the individual who's taking that over, who actually took over my class when I quit teaching at University of Florida. And I told him that I would let you all know, you know, they're always looking for projects. Obviously, they couldn't handle something nearly the scope of a comp plan rewrite, but there may be one particular element or something like that where you're looking for something outside the box at, and I'm sure the cost is nominal. Don't know what it would be.
Right.
But where you could look at student feedback, you know, from people who are about to be licensed and also if they have grad students or lawyers, of course, that department had, you know.
Sure.
But that might be something in the future that while this is going on and you have a professional planner on contract, perhaps if that was something you were interested in, could get with the law school and see if that's something where they can provide some feedback and do some of the planning work essentially for you. Planning students do participate in the program as well. So just want to let you know that is always an option for you. And if ever, you know, a project like that does come up, I'm happy to, you know, give, Thomas Hawkins is the individual's name, give him a call and have a discussion with him and, you know, see if it's something that would work on a semester-type basis for him. So just something to keep in mind, you know, good free labor is always a good thing. And that's all I have.
No, I think very candidly, you know, I'd say it when the small semester starts, if they got students and projects they need to get done, that would be some great timing. Because we hopefully be through the budget.
They generally, I think, are kind of a semester out. But anytime, yeah, there's a longer-term project, certainly can set up the dialogue and see if it's something that they can handle and, you know, do it at severely reduced cost for you.
Sure, absolutely. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, third.
All in favor? Thank y'all.
7:30.